Okay. Call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting for City Council, Monday, October 22, 2018. For those of you wishing to address the City Council on any item on the agenda or under public appearances, oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of the council chambers and submit to staff as early in the meeting as possible. And we all stand for the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. May we have roll call, please.
Ms. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Gangona?
Here.
Mr. Boyda Ventura?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present. This evening, we have a presentation from SMC Alert. We have Mr. Kevin Rose supervisor and Mr. Jeff Norris, district coordinator from the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, honorable members of the council. Jeff Norris, Emergency Services Coordinator for San Mateo County. Supervising Coordinator Kevin Rose sends his apologies. He cannot make proceedings, unfortunately. He is in. There are some slides. You've seen the slides.
And does that not working over there anymore?
I know.
Much. So, the SMC Alert is the digital alert and notification system of San Mateo County. It is both a means of sending emails as well as text messages. It's the county's reverse 911 system. It is our primary notification system in times of emergency in the community. Can you advance slide one? Thank you. So, the SMC Alert is one of the first of our digital notification systems that was in the greater Bay Area. We started it back in 2004 and have upgraded it several times since then. Currently, we're using an Everbridge backbone on it, the same software that's being used by nine other counties in the greater Bay Area. So, we have a collaborative purchase, which gives us the opportunity to get it at the best possible price, given the size of the nine Bay Counties. So, the SMC Alert has been used for many, many problems, everything from major fires. So, the pipeline rupture and fire in San Bruno, many messages over the course of several days went out, to smaller fires, the 50-acre brush fire that was in the town of Woodside two years ago, we've used that, as well as to notify when other things will be happening because of fires. We do major traffic issues, particularly our major highways. It has been used to notify when Highway 101 was closed twice, once for gasoline tank truck that rolled over, once again for a motor home that was on fire, blocking all of lanes, and yet again, when power lines fell across freeway. So, we use it for major traffic issues. For law enforcement issues, we've actually the ability to dial it down to a smaller notification area using our reverse 911 system as one block. So, we can notify a neighborhood when there's a hazard in the area, or we can send to an entire city when there's items of interest that the police department want the public to be informed about, you know, crime trends or the capture of a serious criminal. And then, the flexibility of the system. It's used by many of the cities to send out notifications for various purposes in the interest of the public safety. So, statistically, in the last three months, we've seen growth in all of the cities and towns in the county. Most notably, some of the mid-county towns have grown quite much. The smaller population towns have a great advantage. They can have a higher percentage with a smaller number of individuals. Also, our smaller population towns, Woodside, Portola Valley, Half Moon Bay, have specific hazards that make the community more interested in being on the alert and warning system. So, how do we grow the system? How do we get more people interested in it? Well, this is one of our ways. We reach out to our city councils and to our partners, agencies, and say, how can we reach the community? How can we let people know that we want to do this? We do community fairs. Not too long ago, we did one both in North Fair Oaks and another one in San Bruno at Skyline College. We've done preparedness days on an annual basis. The most recent one, just a few weeks ago, at Fairgrounds, easily 1,000 people came to it from all over the county. We had some great exhibits and we had a lot of interest in SMC Alert. And, we have a great advantage of word of mouth. Usually, after a large-scale incident, someone will tell somebody, I knew about this first because I was getting the messages from SMC Alert. Many different avenues. And, you know, we're willing to entertain any ideas that people come up with for how we can grow the system and get more opportunity in it. So, once again, on behalf of the county, we thank you very much, SMC Alert, because of our strong partnership with Daly City Police Department, North County Fire Authority, and with the help of councils like yourselves, we intend to make this the best notification system we possibly can. Jeff Norris, I can be reached at County Center, and we appreciate greatly that you invited us to come this evening. If there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to entertain.
Thank you so much. There is one thing I'd like you to share with the audience. So, for instance, how would they, like, right now, how would they sign up?
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Yeah?
So, the easiest way to sign up for the SMC Alert is to go to www.smcalert.info. So, S-M-C-A-L-E-R-T dot I-N-F-O. There, you'll have a link on the right-hand side of the page. It says, "New Account." If you click there, it'll take you right into the signup page, which has our header on it. It's an Everbridge backbone. There's several pages that you step through, but it'll start with asking you your name, an email address, a location, locations of interest to you, addresses, perhaps your school, perhaps a workplace. Then, it asks for various contact methods, like other email addresses that you would like it sent to, and an SMS number or text number for a cellphone. It asks for them separately because it was originally, the software was made so versatile, it can support devices like tablets that can't receive a call, but they can still receive text. So, you enter your information. There's a tab where you can select communities of interest. So, let's say you live in Daly City, so you give us a Daly City address, but you also work in San Mateo. You could select San Mateo as a community of interest, and that's how you receive messages. Now, we have also installed a Nixle system. Now, Nixle is very limited-sized messages, but for some individuals, it's easier to sign up for. All you do is text your five-digit postal code, postal zip code, to 888-777. So, for individuals who don't have access to a computer, or perhaps don't have email, that brings up an individual who, actually, an individual in Daly City. I just got this message the other day. This was a person who does not have email, only has a landline telephone, but they wanted to make sure that they were in the system. I went in, looked him up, verified that their information was good in our reverse 911 database, and made a special entry in the system. So, if we are doing a voice call, they'll receive it, whether it's by reverse 911 or SMC Alert. It's a very versatile system.
Thank you very much. That's www.smc alert.
Oops. S-M-C-A-L-E-R-T.
S-M-C-A-L-E-R-T.
Yes, thank you.
S-M-C dot alert dot info.
No dot.
No dot?
No dot between S-M-C and alert.
Oh, www.smcalert.info.
That is correct.
And, next time you show your, take your show on the road, put it on your slide.
Which, which?
Put the website on your slide in the future.
Oh.
Well, we would love to talk to you, but we really just want to sign up.
Well, and I'm happy. I'm happy to sign people up on the system. As the chief system administrator, I probably get anywheres between eight and nine telephone calls at the office of emergency services a week, anywhere's up to 30 or 40 emails of people who want assistance signing up, or who have changed their account and can't remember how to log in. So, I'm more than happy to help people sign up. But, that www.smcalert.info, best way to do it.
Thank you very much. There is a question from Vice Mayor Boyda Ventura.
Thank you very much for coming today. I thought that was very informative. As you were talking, I was thinking about, you know, some of the emergency situations and natural disasters that we could experience. And I guess the first thing that came through my mind was, in the event the cell towers are disabled and you can't get wireless cell coverage and things like that, what is the, what do you recommend? What is the plan for that? And secondly, I noticed in some, sometimes when there have been natural disasters, Facebook has a check-in system where you can mark yourself okay, and it's very helpful and useful for people to, who care about their loved ones and wondering where they are. Does San Mateo County have something like that, where they can check in and see if, mark yourself as okay, and whether or not that's possible? And then, the other thing is, I have noticed an increase in people who have satellite phones. And do you know if that's the kind of technology also that this system could feed into?
Okay. So, we, our SMC Alert is configured so it can deal not just with cellphones, but it also can do email. It can also do wireline phones, so people who still have existing wired telephone service going to their residence, we can contact those through that system. And, we, in partnership with all of our public safety agencies, we know that sometimes the best way that we can contact is going to be that firefighter or police officer who comes and knocks on your door and says, look, it's now time, we really need you to get out of harm's way. So, we use a multi-tiered approach. Along the coast side, San Mateo County actually has eight all-hazard sirens that are capable of doing both tone and voice messages. They were predominantly installed in the tsunami inundation zone, because those were areas of grave concern if somebody was on the beaches or outside of a house where they did not hear a phone ring. There's also one siren located in Bear Gulch Canyon near the dam. Many years ago, people became concerned that that, there was one way in and out of Bear Gulch Road, so they wanted a siren in there. They worked with Menlo Fire Protection District to put that in. So, we use a multi-tiered approach for notification. In terms of satellite phones, yes, a person can sign a satellite phone up for the SMC Alert, but satellite phones do have extreme limitations. Their antennas have to be in clear space, they have to be able to see the sky, and they have to be able to get dial tone through the system. And satellite is a very limited technology. There's a very fine, much more finite amount of dial tone available on satellite. And, you had an interme, a third question in the middle there.
The Facebook check-ins?
Oh, Facebook check-ins. So, San Mateo County has a very strong partnership with the Red Cross. And Red Cross has been partnering with Facebook, as well as some of the Google Document platforms, and their own software platform, which is called Safe &amp; Well, which is operated by the Red Cross, where a person can, who's displaced by an emergency, can go to Safe &amp; Well. They can put their information in, say, yes, I'm fine, I'm here. And, a relative can contact Safe &amp; Well. And, because of the way Red Cross protects the information, it's a little bit different than the way the Facebook system, Facebook, you are offering out your information, and whoever can see that account can see the information. With the Red Cross Safe &amp; Well, a displaced person, when a relative or so checks the information, they see a message that says, yes, this person is okay. They're then routed to a Red Cross representative who sends the person who's seeking the informations, information to the displaced person, who then says, yes, release to that person, or no, don't release to that person. So, they, they're a little more protective of the information than the Facebook strategy. However, Facebook is in Menlo Park. They're a strong partner of ours. We've been working with them on several different projects, and they've, they've really come a long ways with their strategy for how they can let people know that people are okay, even in times of emergency, when you can't get a general phone call through, or you're moving from place to place. So, you just want to put out the word that, yes, you're fine, I'll get in touch when I can.
Thank you. Very helpful.
Thank you. Councilmember Sylvester?
Good evening, sir. How are you?
I am very well, thank you. Always a pleasure to see you.
Thank you, sir. Just wanted to let the public know that Mr. Rose provides a report every month on SMC Alerts. And, I attend those OES meetings and basically have put it out to the public before about SMC Alerts. And I'm happy that we got you up here to validate how great the system is. I am a member, well, I subscribe to it, and you can identify the particular areas, if you want, as to where you want to get alerts from. Well, I was about to say unfortunately, but I took all of San Mateo County. So, I get alerts from mountain lions in Atherton and Belmont. And, I even get alerts from the city of Coma, where the street was closed down because of some sort of hazard. So, for the public, if you have any family that you would wish to, you know, stay abreast as to what's happening in their area, you can sign on to SMC Alerts and pick the area where they live in, and you will get the alerts.
Well, to even elaborate upon that.
Yes.
We actually have a number of subscribers who are not in San Mateo County, but they have relatives who live here.
Right.
We even have a couple of subscribers in France, Spain, Great Britain, Germany, because they have relatives who live here, and they want to know when there's an emergency in these communities. It's that versatile a system.
Absolutely. So, I just wanted to say, thank you so much. This is very, very important, because if you look at the stats, Daly City consists of 109,000 as a population, but yet, it is the lowest in subscription to SMC Alert, 1.7%. That is very low, ladies and gentlemen. So, Mr. Rose, we're going to continue to push this. Thank you so much for coming up. And one last thing I want to leave with the public, it's free. It doesn't cost you anything. So, thank you, and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I have one last question. How often is it used, particularly, as you mentioned, within a block radius or so? I know it, it actually, the vantage point could be very large and very small, but how many times has it been used in a very isolated neighborhood situation?
So, on a, on a very small basis, where we're calling, like, one block, that's actually a very rare occurrence. We've probably had five or six of those in the last year. And, most of those were in conjunction with our police departments, who've said, we just want to notify everybody on this block. So, we've been putting those messages together. Because of the small nature of that, that usually goes with our reverse 911 system, because we can target that to just the phones that are attached to that particular block. We've had messages that go to a single city. Those are almost daily occurrence. And then, we have messages that go out countywide, and in some cases, because of the impact, they connect to our partner agencies in San Francisco County, Alameda County, and Santa Clara County. Some of them go out multi-county. And, those are relatively rare, maybe two or three at most a year.
Well, thank you very much. So, Daly City, people in the audience, if you haven't signed up, please do. It's an effective way to learn about emergencies and also, you know, also look out for your loved ones, as Councilmember Sylvester mentioned. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us today.
Moving on to the approval of the minutes for regular meeting of October 8, 2018. Do you have a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull two items, number one and number eight.
Okay. Number one and number eight.
With the exception of items number one and eight, I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number one, proposed revision of building inspector job specification.
And, my concern is with the actual job specification. And, I'm assuming you have that with you. My concern is, is the education part. So, a building inspector has to have three years of progressively responsible experience in a variety of building inspection or construction work. Now, that makes sense. Education, equivalent to the completion of 12th grade. And then, in parentheses, it says, additional qualifying experience, meaning above the three years, may be substituted for the required education on a year-for-year basis. That means if you had nine years of experience, you could have a sixth-grade education and be a building inspector. I'm saying, that sounds crazy to me. That, a minimum should be a high school diploma or GED should be required. So, I don't know how that got through there, or is this a mistake, or what?
So, that's actually part of the already existing, the change, it was really for the certifications to allow it on that period of time.
Well, it says this, yeah, but it says now, this is the new inspection thing. So, I mean, y'all are okay with that, having sixth graders be building inspectors? I mean, people with sixth grade educations?
I believe what Leilani, who's the acting HR director, is trying to say is that the education piece of this job spec hasn't changed. For whatever reason, this language has been in place for 25 years. So, we're really.
Yeah, it's time for a change, is what I'm saying.
We definitely can look into that. We, but for the purpose of tonight, we're looking at certification for recruitment and retention purposes. So, certainly, we can look at the sort of antiquated education language, but that has been in place for a very long time, and I don't know if, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
No, that wasn't part of the change.
Right. It's.
So, I'm looking at my colleagues here. Am I crazy, or is that something that we probably would like staff to do? I mean, I might be crazy, but I'm thinking we want to chop that a little bit. What do you think?
I have a comment from Councilmember Sylvester.
Oh, thank you, Madam Christensen. That's a good catch. It is time for a change.
Yeah, I used to teach sixth grade. I know what they know.
I mean, sixth grade.
A building inspector needs to know more than that. I mean, not that it would likely come up, but we want to encourage people to have a high school diploma or a GED, either one. And, and experience on top of that.
Madam Christensen, it says 12th grade. So, that means.
Yeah, but it says in the next thing, you can, if you have more experience, you can exchange, you can substitute that for, on a year-by-year basis, for education. So, if you had more experience, you could have less education. So, if you had nine years of experience, the three that are required, and then the six extra years subtracted from the 12th grade brings you down to sixth grade. I'm good with math. Trust me.
On a realistic matter, can, with the HR, I mean, how has this been actually?
Certainly, I don't believe that if we were to bring this to the union as an issue that was raised by council, I don't think it would be an issue whatsoever, and we're happy to do that. If we could get direction to say, hey, if the council wants clarification on this and bring it back with, not a problem with approving, that's not a problem. But, the real, the real reason we brought it forward is the, for the certification purpose. So, did you want to go over that a little bit, Leilani, or?
And I totally support that.
Okay.
Okay, then just vote on the certification. Move to approve.
No, go ahead. We have a motion on the floor. I'll accept the motion. With discussion, I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, for discussion?
Yeah, does any, is there any more discussion? But, I just want to make sure, this isn't for item number one, because it says, item you want to speak on, Mr. Wait, Skip? This is, this is not the item. Okay. Just wanted to make sure. So, any other discussion?
Yes, I agree that I'm for approval for the certification. However, I need further clarification and specifics on the education portion of these qualifications.
So, that'll come back to us separately.
Yes.
Yeah, that will be no problem, to bring that back.
So, I move approval of item one, the proposed revision of building inspector job specifications.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also pulled from the agenda is to authorize the Daly City Public Library to participate in the annual Food for Fines program. Councilmember Christensen?
Yeah, I, I'm going to give you an opportunity to advertise this program.
Thank you, Councilwoman Christensen.
I think I do it every year.
This is our, this will be the fifth consecutive year that the Daly City Public Library, along with most of the libraries along the peninsula library system, will be participating in the Food for Fines program. It runs from November 1st to December 31st. And, real briefly, what it is, if you bring in a non-perishable, non-expired food item, we don't want old food, you can bring that up to the front counter, and if you have outstanding fines for delinquent book returns, you can purge your record in exchange for can of beans. It's a great program. We, last year, we had, I think, about nearly 200 people take advantage of it. 188 members in the community took advantage of it last year. And I know there was some concern that, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a revenue loss for us, but in the scheme of things, not too terribly impactful to us. So, we're looking for authorization to do it a fifth year.
What was the outcome from last year?
The number of, we had 188 members.
Participate?
Participate, right. And, the fines that were forgiven were totaled $2,497. And, we have seen that number dropping pretty dramatically over here, because I think a lot of people took advantage in the first year of the program, when they had a lot of fines. The other thing that's, that's different this year than previous years, too, is we, we no longer have fines for children's materials, and that was a lot of what was coming in, you know, with, with the fines that were getting forgiven. So, we hope the public participates. And, and one other thing I will add, we collect food year-round. So, we, we have a partnership with Second Harvest Food Bank to collect food at all of our libraries. But, if you do it between November 1st and December 31st, and you happen to have some fines on your library record, they will be forgiven. and you happen to have some fines on your library record, they will be forgiven. But you have to come up and let somebody know. You can't anonymously drop off a can.
Great, thank you very much. And I recommend even if you don't have fines, this is a great opportunity. On your way to the library, open up your pantry, grab a few items, and donate. Actually, one year, I didn't have any fines, but the lady behind me had quite a few and was in a financially strapped situation. So I made a donation on her behalf. And she's checking out more books, and that's what we want to see. So, happy holidays and bring food for fines. Thank you for stepping up and sharing that with us.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And I'd like to make a motion to accept, to authorize the Daily City Public Libraries to participate in the annual Food for Fines program.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Madam Christensen, thank you for that. You were one step ahead of me. I was thinking about, could I get a list of people who have fines, and I'll bring in food for them? Anyway, I think it's an absolute marvelous idea, sticking outside of the box and reaching outside of the box. However, I'm also concerned that we don't become an enabler. Basically, folks will take out books, and if you don't bring them back, well, that's okay. They'll have this special thing at the end of the year, which is bring some food. But I think that's far-fetched, but it's a marvelous idea. And thank you for continuing. And Madam Christensen, for having this matter pulled so that we can bring more awareness to the public.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. We are on item number nine. The minor subdivision, sub 7-7-18-13562, 127 Werner Avenue. Mr. Pollan?
Madam Mayor, if I can make, I keep hearing a slight pitch.
Whatever that is, it's stuck in my hearing aid.
Oh, it is you, too?
Yeah.
Okay, because I...
We're all hearing it.
I thought dogs can only hear it, and it's a high pitch. I can hear it.
The what?
Let's see. Oh, it's gone now. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Manalo and councilmembers. The first item before you this evening is the minor subdivision for 127 Werner Avenue. The applicant proposes to subdivide the existing 6,000-square-foot lot into two 3,000-square-foot lots with the future intention of constructing a single-family home on each of the two lots. The existing home on the lot would be demolished. The subject property is located on the east side of Werner Avenue, south of Vale Street. This slide shows the proposed parcel map for the site. The project is exempt from CEQA in accordance with Section 15315 for minor land divisions. The general plan encourages the development of infill housing in existing neighborhoods on sites that are underutilized, where residential development represents the highest and best use, and where public infrastructure exists to support the intensity of the proposed development. Staff recommends that the city council approve minor subdivision, the minor subdivision for 127 Werner Avenue. And this completes staff's presentation. And I am available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. At this time, does any of my colleagues have any questions? Councilmember Sylvester.
Mr. Pollan, thank you so much for your presentation. I viewed this, this exact presentation when it went through the planning division. Whatever came about at the request of Commissioner Peronio and Commissioner Edelman to reduce the number of bedrooms and bathrooms?
So, you, the past planning commission meeting, we reviewed two separate projects. That's actually the next item on the agenda for you.
Okay, all right. Then, the question I generally always ask, does this meet the requirements for square footage versus available parking?
It does. We do not have a proposal yet for the homes that are going to be constructed on the lot. But at that time, they will be reviewed by the planning division to comply with the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, thank you for your presentation. At this point, is there a motion to approve?
So moved?
Oh, second.
Okay, and may we have roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Yes.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye, thank you very much. Moving on to item number 10, use permit UPR 6-18-13530 and design review DR-6-18-1350, three-story residential duplex at 201 Vista Grande Avenue.
And I need to interrupt here for a second. I live within the 500 feet from this project, so I must recuse myself. I'll step outside, but somebody has to come and get me when this is over. Don't just leave me out there.
We won't leave you out there. You can just recuse yourself, you know? All right, so, Mr. Pollan?
Thank you, Mayor Manalo. The next item before you is the use permit and design review for the Vista Grande duplex located at 201 Vista Grande Avenue. The applicant is proposing to construct a new three-story duplex building on a vacant lot. A grocery store and residential unit which previously occupied the site were destroyed by fire and subsequently demolished in the early 2000s. The subject property is located at the southwest corner of Vista Grande Avenue and Miriam Street. The site plan incorporates a front yard 20 feet in depth along Vista Grande, which includes a two-car-wide driveway. The driveway provides additional parking for Unit 1, which, as originally proposed, was a five-bedroom unit. And Unit 2 was a four-bedroom unit. The remainder of the front yard area will be landscaped. A condition has been added to restrict any additional paving. The rear yard has a depth of 23 feet. Upon review by the planning commission, the commission recommended a reduction in the number of bedrooms and bathrooms to four bedrooms, three and a half bathrooms for each unit. The ground floor plan is essentially a mirror image for each of the two units, with the exception being the garages. The first unit's two-car garage is oriented towards Vista Grande Avenue, and the second unit's two-car garage is oriented towards Miriam Street. A family room and bathroom are also located on the ground floor. A condition has been added by staff to remove the tub shower from the bathroom at this level in order to dissuade its use as an independent livable unit. The second floor consists of a living room, kitchen, and two bathrooms for both Units 1 and Unit 2. The third floor plan consists of, and let me interrupt myself here. The third floor plan, as originally proposed, consisted of three bedrooms and a roof deck for Unit 1, and two bedrooms for Unit 2. As I previously mentioned, the planning commission has recommended reducing the bedroom count for Unit 1 to four bedrooms. The front and rear elevation use split gable roofs, roof corbels, belly bands, and varying siding materials to break up the massing and to provide additional architectural interest. The same architectural elements carry over to the Miriam Avenue elevation. The project is exempt from CEQA under Section 15303 for new construction of small structures. Staff finds that the proposed use is compatible with the general plan and the zoning regulations of the single-family slash duplex residential district, and that the design is compatible and complementary to the existing neighborhood. Staff recommends that the city council approve use permit UPR 61813528 and design review DR 61813530 with the amended conditions of approval by the planning commission. This completes staff's presentation, and I'm happy and available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions for my colleagues? Councilmember Sylvester.
Can we go back to the slide on Marion Avenue? Apparently, I'm not seeing that here. I'm seeing a different...
Are you looking at the elevation, or the...
No, I'm looking at Valley Street, Werner Avenue, and Mateo Avenue. So, I guess my attachment is wrong. So, that's why I had to ask you to go back. That one there, on the Miriam Street side?
Yes.
There's a garage there.
Correct. There's a two-car garage facing both Vista Grande Avenue and a second two-car garage that faces Miriam Street. The garage that faces Vista Grande Avenue has a 19-foot-deep driveway to provide additional parking. On the garage that faces Miriam Street, it does not have a driveway that's deep enough to provide additional parking.
That's what I was getting at. So subsequently, if we took the whole unit, the duplex in total, if the garage and driveway, to include the garage on the Miriam Street side, there would be a total of six cars.
That is correct.
Available to park.
That's correct.
But yet, we have the revised of four bedrooms, three and a half baths on one unit, four bedrooms, three and a half baths on the second unit. So that comes out to eight bedrooms, six or seven bathrooms. Right? Total.
You are correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? When they, when they exit their, the garage, it's facing Miriam Street, right, not Vista Grande? When they exit their...
One of the garages faces Miriam, the other garage faces Vista Grande.
Okay. I see. It's located right across the street from Woodrow Wilson Elementary School. Just looking at the pathway on when they exit. Because a lot of kids actually walk that area going to school. So just looking at the pathway of where the garage is. Okay. Any, seeing no other questions or comments? So there was a reduction in staff's recommendation to have the bedroom count smaller, right?
Correct. Originally, staff had placed a condition to reduce the full bathroom on the ground floor to a half bathroom. And the planning commission further suggested a condition to reduce the total number of bedrooms to four in each of the units, rather than five in one unit and four in the other. And to reduce the number, total number of full bathrooms by one bath per unit over what was originally proposed by the applicant.
I think that, I think that was one of the concerns that we've heard around ensuring that it doesn't become kind of a rental boarding house, but really, making sure it's like more familial and that it doesn't actually get so many folks into the area, especially around the issue of, I know a lot of people's concerns around parking and, and things like that. And so, I think you addressed that. I know that was one of the issues around it being particularly just like a rental space that might be only for usage that is, is not necessarily permanent.
Right.
Or so, so. Okay.
Yes. What's the square footage of Unit number one? I'm seeing 20, 25, oh, those are, those are the lot sizes.
No, I believe...
Or maybe the applicant?
The applicant is here, he may be able to answer these questions for you.
Great, can we have the applicant come on up?
The first unit, the Unit 1, is 2,500, and the second unit is like 22, 22.
And which is the biggest unit? Well, obviously...
The biggest unit is Unit 1.
Is, I'm sorry?
Unit 1.
Unit 1, which is 2,500 square feet?
Yes.
Okay, now, just help me clarify. You originally requested five bedrooms and five bathrooms in Unit, the big one, Unit 1. And then also in Unit 2, you requested four bedrooms and four bathrooms?
Yes.
So for the combination of both units, I get nine bedrooms and nine bathrooms? With the estimated change, changing Unit number one from five bedrooms to four bedrooms and four baths, and Unit number 2, four bedrooms to four baths, total is eight and eight. So basically, we lost, between both units, we only lost one bedroom and one bathroom? Okay.
And also, we reduced the bathroom on the ground floor to a half bath?
Ah, that's, got you. One half. And that's on Unit?
Both units.
Okay, all right.
The last question I have is how far is the garage on Vista Grande when the car is exiting to the walkway?
19 feet.
19 feet?
Yeah, there's a 19 feet side path from the front of San Chita to the car, not to the car, to the public way of way.
Okay.
Yes.
But that's 19 feet from the, the house to the right-of-way? I'm saying from, actually, as you exit, how far is it from the crosswalk when you, the car coming out?
The sidewalk is out, it's like 15 feet.
Okay.
Yes.
So...
So, if you add them up together, that would be like about 34...
So when the car is exiting, it's about 15 feet away from the crosswalk?
When the car actually exiting from the garage will be like 19 feet to the, to the crosswalk, and then the sidewalk, actually 15 feet.
Okay.
Yes.
That's what I wanted, because as you exit, as I mentioned, it's actually adjacent to the school. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve or adopt this? The use permit for UPR 6-18-1350, 530, and design review DR-618-13530?
So moved?
Okay.
Second.
All, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Christensen?
Oh.
Absolutely. Sorry. Mr. Gangona?
Yes.
Mr. Buenaventura?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
Ms. Menal?
Aye.
Can I make a request?
We already voted.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, but I don't...
Yeah, it's like 3.5 bath, actually, three, three half bath and a half bath on the ground floor. Actually, there's another half bath on the second floor. So that would be total like three half bath and two half bath.
Okay, so planning staff, are you saying you're requesting one, or are...
Actually, from the Planning Commission, there's a 3.5 bathroom, which is a three half, three half bath and one half bath.
Yeah.
But there is an other like half bath on the second floor, which is make it like, if you add them together, we get like four bathroom. So just want to make sure this four bathroom, four bathroom, which is like three just half bath, just half bathroom, three four half, actually, four bathroom. Is that...
I would ask planning for interpretation.
Mr. Palman, what is that change?
What we will do when the applicant submits a set of plans, I think we understand the, staff understands the intent of the Planning Commission and the City Council is to make sure that this is going to function as a family home as opposed to a potential boarding house, where each bedroom has its own individual bathroom. So if the applicant submits a revised sets of plans that has a half bathroom on the middle floor, the main level of the home that has the living room, if it's meeting the zoning coordinates and that half bathroom is not in one of the bedrooms, I think that would be acceptable to the Planning Division and Planning Staff. And I believe it would meet the intent of the Commission and the City Council.
But we approved it right now with no half bath, right? That's, I mean, we just, that was the, what we approved?
I believe so. Did, the plans did not originally show a half bathroom on the...
The plan actually originally show, is show on the second floor.
But we, but planning, did a planning staff take it out? Because I know that you're trying to move from having that situation.
I am like...
Essentially, what we can do with this request is the request doesn't violate any of the conditions of the school we're going to approve. I think the intent is to have a half bath there so that anybody using the family room on the second floor wouldn't have to use one of the private...
Got it. So a half bathroom basically is a sink and a restroom?
It wouldn't violate any of the conditions.
Yeah. Because there's no bath.
Right.
So it's just when they approve it through your submission?
Right.
Okay. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment on this item? There was no public comment on this item. Unless there's someone in the audience, but I don't see it on the cards. Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, we have public appearances and oral communications. We have Mr. Skip Weiss, Wes?
Wheeze.
Wheeze, Mr. Please...
Always happens, I made that mistake last year.
Nice to see you, Mr. Wheeze.
Thank you for letting us come here. First of all, my name is Skip Wheeze. I am the new commander of the F W Post 8750 of the city.
All right. Congratulations.
And this is my co-chairman, James Montero. Senior Vice Commander, Commander Tom Geller, and our adjutant, Juan Schultz. On behalf of the post, we'd like to invite you guys to our picnic on the 28th of this month at Dillard Park.
Oh.
And as a Halloween theme.
Wow.
So if you got kids from ages from three months to 12, we'll have a costume contest. For Mr. Sylvester, you can wear your costume.
Are you gonna have food there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, if you got, if you feed me, I'll be there. Oh, yeah.
Any of you guys want to add? It's from nine o'clock till six.
Nine to six, nine to six.
We do have some games for the kids. We're gonna have a card, bumping carding contest for them, plus a costume contest. And then for adults, we got a couple games going for the adults, too.
All right.
Can't leave those out.
So I just wanted to add, with our new restructuring, the VFW's real main function is basically to reach as many veterans and families in this community who are gonna be, we're pushing more forward to that within the new structure. So that's what our outlook is, to be able to reach.
Thank you.
As many veterans as we can, and fix the system with whatever means they have.
Thank you very much. Oh, that was you, Santa Claus. I saw that. Well, thank you so much for your service, and thank you for continued dedication to our community, especially reaching the young people. I think it's such a great opportunity for young people to interact with you all, and it's really special that you guys are putting this on for the kids. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I've been many years to the picnic, and it's always been a real highlight. It's fun, you can move from table to table and meet a lot of people that you don't know, and sit down with families and engage. It's a very fun thing. The food's always good, and we expect to see you guys up here more frequently announcing things, ways that we can help.
Well, we do have both sides, and we do have the VFW Post from San Francisco coming down, too.
Excellent.
So we have both sides.
All right.
And we will be doing more for the city and events.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Veterans Day.
A seat in the hospital.
Okay, Ms. Sandra Bernal?
Oh, didn't even... Oh, this is public comment now?
Yes.
Oh.
Welcome.
So we have a few issues. I thought I would put my name and my other's name, but I will be the one speaking. As you know, most of you, I'm Christina Bernal, and I've lived on the 100 blocks of Miami for forever. I'm here today because the parking in our neighborhood is atrocious. This is not the first time myself or anybody else from our community has come to the council about this. I know that no decisions can be made through this process, but I need to know what we need to do, one as a city and one as a neighborhood, to get something organized. We currently have permit parking from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Doesn't work.
That doesn't.
What I would like to see is like San Francisco from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. This will prevent BART parkers from parking in our neighborhood, and that is currently what our problem is. We have the BART, we have the movie theaters, and we have the restaurants. I understand the parking structures are free, and I understand they're there, but that doesn't mean everybody else knows that. With this, a lot of crime has come about also. Cars get broken into, houses are being broken into. I live at 4:30, I have a neighbor to the right and to the left of me, no wait, to the right of me is an elderly woman who lives alone, who has reached out to my husband and I because there's people sleeping behind our house. My husband went to inspect it, there was a garbage can back there, a makeshift hammock back there between our home and her home. We notified the police department, whether or not somebody came out, I don't know. I'm also requesting that we have more police presence on the weekend, and whether it be, whether the city determines if BART police or Daly City police, the back of our homes need to be policed. That parking lot back there, there's a police department, but nobody comes out. You can hear a gunshot, you can hear, sorry, now my part is next.
You're gonna use your time, okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
You can hear a gunshot, you can hear people fighting, you never see a BART police officer step foot into that lot. If Daly City is telling us that that's BART's problem, then BART needs to step up, and I feel that the city, Daly City, needs to tell BART to step up. Daly City voted BART in, Daly City needs to police BART. That's how I feel as a resident and as a taxpayer. As for Daly City police policing our neighborhood in the evenings, it's only right. I mean, my son-in-law has stopped three different burglary attempts on vehicles, not even our own vehicles. Unfortunately, one neighbor did get hit. He couldn't stop at all. There's times that my son has been out there and has stopped them from trying to break into my dad's van. We need people patrolling our neighborhood, but we also need help with keeping the roof wrapped out. The other problem we have is Monday through Wednesday, there are no meter maids coming through our neighborhood between 7:00 and 10:00 a.m. But by golly, on Thursday and Friday for street cleaning, they're there. That's not fair. I have elderly parents, my son was helping me get my elderly parents into the car, and let me tell you, by 9:10, there was a meter maid trying to give him a ticket. That's not right. Every other day, all these BART people can park at 8:59, 9:59, and not one meter maid has passed. We need your help, and we need to know what to do to get that help from you. If this isn't the forum, then we need to know what is, what petitions, or what needs to be done. But it needs to move forward and not just stop at me signing a petition like I've done in years past. So I need to know for me, as the council, what do we do?
Thank you very much for your comment. You brought up a lot of issues. I know that at this particular time, we can't really make any decisions, but all of the issues you've mentioned are noted down. I've noted it down. You know, the city manager is here, and so particularly around the issues that you've mentioned, we can't really respond right now, but we've had, we've noted, I've noted exactly what you've mentioned, and so we can, you know, follow up another time.
Can you mind just leaving a comment here?
Oh, sure.
I'm not going to be on this council after November 10th. I live in that neighborhood. I would be thrilled to be able to work with you to see if we can't organize folks. And so, the city clerk has your contact information on your card.
I'm not sure if I put my phone number, but I think we put our address. I can add our phone number.
It's the address, your address is here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
And so...
And I will definitely contact you.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
So we've noted the issues, oh, no, we've noted the issues and around particularly what you mentioned, and so if anything, staff can get back to you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Ms. Kazaya David?
Hello. Good evening. So my name is Aisha David. I am a teacher at Oceana High School. I teach tech days, and I'm a community professor. I'm also a community organizer in Daly City. I organize reviews at the 11th Community Center, and I've lived in Daly City for a very long time, and then I moved to Daly City. I'm here to tell you about Measure Y, and to encourage you to continue to support our schools. I'm not sure how many of you have made your way to our school district lately, but I am strong to test if you watch what's happening to our district. Just last year, Oceana alone lost five teachers and our entire admin team. And a lot of that is because they couldn't afford to stay in our area. I myself, I'm a fourth-year teacher, and I can go down to Daly City and make $30,000 a month. That is really horrible. Measure Y is, a bond is asking taxpayers of Daly City and Pacifica, specifically, to the Friday High School District to pay $58 a year. Right? And I know that it's a lot for some people, but $58 goes into the education of our youth. And I don't know if it's, like, we can't really put a price on that, I feel. I had no intention of speaking tonight, but my students are here, and I felt like they're big people. One of the voters' ballots said, or the arguments against it, I guess it said that if you reward failure, you will get more failure on the voter's guide. So I just want to say, if a student is failing my class, I don't give them attention as a reward. I give them attention because that's what they need. So according to this person, our school district is failing, and it's not a reward to give them money, it's just what we need to get them out of that failing process.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm a former Oceana teacher myself.
Karina Gamas?
Good evening, council. What would Daly City? My name is Karina Gamas. I am a senior at Oceana High School, a former resident of Daly City, and I'm also here to show my support for measure that will be on the ballot this November, Measure Y. As Ms. David has already said, Measure Y is a J U H C educational measure, so that if it were to pass, it would bring in roughly $2 million to our district throughout the next 10 years, money that could be used to fund our classes or after-school programs, but in my opinion, wasn't for teaching purposes. I have been really fortunate and really privileged to go to a school and learn from such inspiring individuals, individuals that I get to call teachers. They have completely revolutionized my learning, my mentality, and the way I process the world. They have demonstrated to me that school isn't just a place of like use of fags or a place of the government makes me go every day, but it really is a place of empowerment. Any success that I might grow to attain in my future, it will be because of them, because of my teachers. They really are shaping the next generation of leaders, and yet, they're completely overworked, overstressed, and underpaid. So as leaders of our community and our city council, please help my peers and I encourage voters to vote yes on Measure Y. And finally, one last thing that I wanted to say is, 2018, it really is the year of young people. We will turn out, we will be at the polls, and we will be watching. And I am a young person, and what I want to see be done in my community is better funding for my schools and better style things for my teachers.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Gabriella Maxman?
I'm hard in here. I've been talking a lot of these things, and I've lost my voice. I'd like to speak on what the woman that was here that was on my end, I was speaking to.
Oh.
I actually saw the dam that's behind her house, and since I've been doing a lot of walking around the city, I've noticed a lot of encampments, a lot of, not just litter and trash, but furniture in yards, bathrooms, houses that may have fires in them or floods with a lot of furniture outside, a lot of disheveled properties with multiple cars that are with flat tires that look like they haven't moved in a long time. Specifically, Hussein, New York, the Franciscan, and it's all on Hillcrad, those are the ones that I've written down. I don't know what the city can do around, you know, police and private property, but I do think that there's something that should be done. Daly City is a really beautiful place, and some of these things are really impacting what it looks like. And I don't know, you know, there's a number that they can call and report something, I don't, I don't know. I also really want to commend the two young women that spoke. I went to public schools, and my government class highly influenced me. And I don't know, you know, there's a number that they can call and report something, I don't, I don't know. I also really want to commend the two young women that spoke. I went to public schools, and my government class highly influenced me. I know I can't afford to be gone to here. I support this. I hope others do it well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Ms. Florence Chang.
Hi, I'm also here for Measure Y. I'm a student from Jefferson Union.
I'm gonna ask you to speak just a little louder, so people at home can hear you.
I'm a student from the Jefferson Union High School District. And I'm here today to ask all of the please vote for and promote Measure Y. I ask this because I love and respect my teachers. I jerk around with my teachers in the hall. I pride with them and stress their manners. I see them every day of the week, from eighth to eighth. Sometimes I'm at school looking seven to nine because I'm in government. That's much longer than most working adults, besides from my teachers. They have to be there with me sometimes, either earlier or later. And one of my most beloved teachers wakes up at five in the morning to get to school to teach us. And she stays late into the evening to supervise our educators. All of the staff members at our school are in pain. Half the system that punishes them for doing what's right. Teachers are shaping our futures, all forced to do not their own. It is painful and heartbreaking to the people that I love suffer. I'm sure everyone can see. I'm a student and want to create a better future, not only for myself, but also for the teachers who are helping me get there. I'm one of them, and we all care deeply about this, and we need rest, and mercy, and years of progress.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, that provided public comment. At this point, any of my colleagues have any appointments on any board of commissions?
I'd move to appoint Glenn Sylvester to the mosquito and vector control district.
Was that an agenda?
I second.
Yes, it was. And I'll second that.
Okay.
Do we vote?
We have all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council committee reports, please. So on this item, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester and I met on October seventeenth, primarily on Affordable Housing Committee. We are going to be reviewing and updating our Affordable Housing Ordinance. It is important for us to do so, most especially since we can provide and now have a plan to have residential, rental, provide onsite units, affordable BMR units. And so I just wanted to let the public know, I know that, you know, it's extremely important for us to build housing, but more importantly, affordable housing. And what this does is hopefully provides an opportunity for developers to see how important it is also. Because we hear that echoing from the community, that we need more below-market rate units being built. And for me personally, I think that as we build market rate units, we need to be building below-market rate units as well. Because it's so important, especially around the climate of what's happening in the Bay Area regionally and coinciding with what the students just said earlier. And that, you know, we need to retain our teachers, we need to have opportunities for workforce housing and opportunities where there's housing for teachers. And this is another way the city is trying to ensure that there's a more equitable opportunity to have these below-market rate units. You know, we have had an ordinance that does the twenty percent, which is for affordable ownership. But this now provides an opportunity for us to have some units that are rental onsite. So please look out for that. We've set time and place to talk about this ordinance on City Attorney's November twenty-sixth. So if there are people that, you know, want to be here during that hearing, please spread the word. It's an important ordinance around affordable housing. And so that is the update. If I'm missing anything else, Councilmember Sylvester?
No, Mayor, you've covered it. And I'm very proud and happy to serve with you on this particular committee. I think putting our heads together with staff, planning, city attorney, city manager, I think we're gonna come up with a good ordinance to help address affordability housing in Daly City. It's not only a local issue, but it's also a regional issue, and Daly City will make sure that we are doing our part.
Thank you. And for a city clerk, for that particular report, I'd like that to be for the record. Thank you very much. Is there also any city council reports at this moment?
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Sylvester?
I'll talk real fast. First of all, city council report, I just want to address some of the comments made earlier. You know, we know about some of the issues. I'm sure Madam Christensen will agree with me. We've worked on the parking issue before I got here. And every community is different, and every community has their concern. But it's good to hear it again, and believe me, it will not be forgotten. I've taken initiative to drive around Daly City, and I have to agree that there are areas where folks dump garbage. Please go on to Daly City's iHelp, take a pitch of it, report it. And it's been my experience that we have a contract and that garbage is picked up within seventy-two hours. I understand that we are one parking assistant short. That might be a thought to help alleviate some of the problems in having our parking assistants out to take on calls. Because I know they're so busy, seventy-two-hour violations and et cetera, so I know they're very busy. Okay, I attended a Hart meeting. I'm proud to say, I mentioned last month, that Daly City four escrows closed for folks who want to buy a home. As you recall, Daly City is a part of Hart where they assist first-time homebuyers to get into a home with as low as five percent. Unfortunately, I'm helping, I would like to work on raising the minimum price. Right now, it's, I think it's Fannie Mae limits of seven-hundred-and-ninety-five K. You can't find that in Daly City. Also, Hart has loaned Redwood City the amount of three-point-five million dollars to build a hundred-and-twenty-five units, apartments, one hundred percent affordable. One hundred percent. So as the mayor spoke earlier, as we're going through this inclusionary housing, those developers who don't want to build and give us the twenty percent, we are gonna take an in lieu fee, and we're gonna put that money aside. So if we build some housing, maybe we can get something that's one hundred percent affordable. Watch for that. On October fifteenth, I attended, along with the mayor, a presentation on wage theft. This happened at one of our establishments in Daly City. And we're hoping to move forward to support the folks who have been subject to wage theft. And that also Daly City shows that we will not tolerate such as well. On the seventh of October, with Vice Mayor Buena Ventura, Mayor Manalo, and Planning Commissioner Di Giovanni, and a lot of other folks within the city, we attended a Doja Pancake Breakfast. You know, I don't like to miss out on food, so I was there. I shouldn't put this out, but I did win the raffle prize, so it's the twenty-eighth, I didn't get that yet, so it's coming. Ten-ten, I attended the mosquito abatement meeting, and everything is going along fine. I tried not to miss that. And I'm trying to ensure, because if you notice, our cost for mosquito abatement has gone up. And Daly City is one of the largest populations in San Mateo. But yet, I'm trying to find out, how much of the service do we use as opposed to some of the other cities? So believe me, I want to make sure that we are getting our worth. If you got rodent problems, mosquito problems, they are there. You are actually, the homeowners are paying to have that work done. And my last comment I'd like to make is, the police officers at the back of the room, if you hadn't taken notice, for the past two weeks, they've been wearing the pink patch. This is in honor of Breast Awareness Week here. And the patches are made available, I'm sure they'll be made available throughout the year. And the cost of the patch is ten dollars. And it, all, all the money will go to the charities, I think it's Susan G. Komen Fund, for breast cancer. So many folks have purchased them already, but please consider doing so. And I'm proud to see the police officers wearing them. As you look at their sleeves, they also have hash marks, and the chief told me that doesn't match the color. And he was trying to get pink hash marks as well. So that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Sylvester. Are there any other city council reports? If none, I'm going to share my city council report. Also, city clerk, I can send this over to you for the record. So on October twelve, I joined Vice Mayor Ray Buena Ventura, Councilmember Christensen, Councilmember Sylvester at the San Mateo County Association of Grand Jurors luncheon.
I forgot about that.
And so, and that, we attended that. And also, on the same evening, attended the Grand National Rodeo Reception at Cal Palace with Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. On that very same evening, October twelve, again, the same evening, I was able to speak and present to Alice, their fifteenth anniversary Alliance for Community Empowerment, a nonprofit, all-volunteer organization dedicated to promoting healthier relationships, homes and communities through education. Also, Daly City resident Julia Temponco and her mother spoke bravely about their family member, Claire Temponco, who was brutally murdered in two thousand. On October thirteenth, Kasayahan, and thank everyone that came to that event, was at Marchbank Park. It was a huge success. I would also like to thank the staff for putting a lot of work into this and the sponsors. Having two lead artists, one legendary, Jocelyn Enriquez, who came backward her debut right here in Daly City, and rising lyricist and rap artist, Rubia Vera. Philippine Consul General Henry Bernsuerto Junior joined us as well. During this celebration, we provided a commendation to two phenomenal women. Dr. Dawn Boholano-Mabelon, a historian and community advocate that we lost a couple of months ago. She's known for being the first Filipina receiving her PhD in Stanford University in American history. Also, Anna Hulaton, who was the first person and only and first elite athlete competing at the highest levels of both boxing and MMA, having an IBA world title and WBO world title. It was not only for her being a woman, but she's actually the first person to do both. Also, with Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, joined on October fifteenth, the Chinese Progressive Association that held the Wage Theft Forum, which was an update on what was happening in Kome, right here in Daly City. You know, it was conveyed by both Councilmember and I that this type of injustice is not tolerated in our city. And to see how we can work together, ensure that this does not happen in the future. On October eighteenth, and actually it's still in existence right now, if you look up at the Rotunda, the Arts and Culture Commission hosted an artist called Laurie Rodriguez, called The Opening of Aloha. So if you have time, there's a beautiful exhibit upstairs. Please join, everyone. At that same evening, you know, there was a candidates forum hosted by the League of Women Voters right here in City Hall. On October nineteenth, I joined Mayor London Breed, hosting the Filipino-American History Night at San Francisco. They spoke of many milestones in the Filipino-American community and highlighted Daly City's PBRC and their thirtieth anniversary with President Reis Satori, and also noted our event here in Daly City, Kasayahan. So, and also, just a couple more. On October nineteenth, the San Francisco Hep-B, Bay Area Heather Together We Can Gala. The Vice Mayor and Councilmember Sylvester was there. But really, it was important to highlight getting tested. And they presented here this year around how important it is to have awareness about hepatitis B. We have a high population of Asian Pacific Islanders, and the statistics say one out of ten Asians can have hepatitis B, and so it is so important to get tested. And lastly, on October twentieth, there was a grand opening of Meat Fresh. And so if you haven't been there, it's at Ceremone, Vice Mayor Ray Buena Ventura, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. We had also Planning Commissioner Pam Di Giovanni, and also Vice Chair of the Planning Commission, Rod Dos Magbaal, that was present. And really, it's international dessert. I mean, I tasted it, it wasn't too sweet, but it's really something that we should all try. And it's right at Ceremone, in between Bye Bye Baby, because I know where that is now, and then Ross. So please support our new local businesses.
Thank you for letting me eat your share, Mayor.
So, and that is all I have for my city council report, and to help you. You're welcome. And at this point, does staff have any reports?
Just really quickly, a reminder that Daly City does have three measures on the ballot. And so if you have any questions about that, we've been doing some community outreach, and the city attorney and I are gonna be doing some more this week. But if you have questions, dalycity.org will give an overview of those three measures.
Thank you. And I do want to say thank you to the staff. Last Monday, they held an informational around the three measures to provide residents and businesses an educational around the three measures. And so, yeah, if there's anyone out there, you're watching right now, if you have any questions, feel free to contact City Hall and City Manager's Office. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Thank you for the time. So we have something new here at City Hall, and that's a mailbox for ballots. And I'd like to have everybody come by and drop them off, your ballots early, because they really did have too many, well, not that there's ever too many, but an awful lot dropped off election night. So it's right out front. You can ju, you'll see it, it's red, white, and blue. If you want to come visit our office, the city clerk's office, you can drop it inside during office hours. And then ten days before the election day, you will be able to come here at City Hall and see a vote center. There are three other locations, and I'll announce them as we get closer. Those are four-day vote centers, I believe, but ours will be ten-day. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that important information. Okay, and this evening, you'd like to adjourn tonight's council meeting in the memory of the following?
Madam Mayor, let me do the first one.
Yes.
Can we please adjourn in memory of Chad Raymond Santa Maria? He is the nephew of Angelica Santa Maria, who was a local Realtor. He was only sixteen years old. He died of a brain tumor. If you would like to help out, their GoFundMe account is under Help Chad Tackle This Tumor. Even though sadly, he did pass away, but they sure could use some help on the expenses. He was a young kid, bright kid. He wrote a very touching note saying goodbye to his friends and family. And rest in peace, Chad. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We also want to adjourn tonight's meeting for Francisco Faranel de Blaza, which is Daly City Arts and Culture Commissioner, Elizabeth Espinda's brother. Also, to Tua Samoa, Afoa Tofaeno, Maleepai, the father of Jefferson Elementary School District Board Member and Personnel Board Member, Manufu Liaga Anoy. He was a father of twenty children and leaves a legacy of eighty-five grandchildren and was a pastor. And also adjourn tonight's. And also adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of Herminia Tejada, the mother of Jefferson Union High School District Board of Trustee, Rosie Tejada, who, she lived in Daly City and lived here since 1962 as a resident, raised five kids and eight grandchildren here in Daly City, and had 10 great-grandchildren. And we all have a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you.